Good evening, everyone. My name is David Fries. I'm the mayor of Tongonoxie. I'm calling to order this August 19th, 2024, meeting of the Tongonoxie City Council. Ms. Huntington, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor. Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Donnelly?
Here.
Mr. Dale?
Here.
Mr. Partridge and Ms. McCutcheon are absent.
All right, thank you. Would you join us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Second item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from the previous meeting of August 5th, 2024. Does anyone have any questions about the minutes or corrections? If not, I would accept a motion to approve.
Motion to approve is presented.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item three on the agenda is the consent agenda, where we review the bill payments from the previous period. Are there any questions about the bill payments? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Is there a second?
And second.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Nothing listed under old business. Mr. Porter, did anyone sign up to speak before the deadline today?
No signups, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. New business, item A is consider the approval of public's firework display, permit applications for a firework display on September 20, organized by Tongonoxie Recreation Commission. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. You may remember from past years, the last two years, the Tongonoxie Rec Commission has organized and requested the city council's required approval of a fireworks display the day before the Tongonoxie Days event, which we'll hear more about at the later part of the agenda tonight. The information that's included in the packet regarding insurance, the site layout plan, and our fire department, police department have reviewed the plans and determined that they have no comments or suggestions for edits or concerns about past events. So it's been a well-appreciated event in the community with a lot of support. And it is an adjacent day to the Tongonoxie Days community event the next day. So we're very excited that they're coming back with that again this year. And we do request your approval unless you have any questions for staff.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I would accept a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the Rec Commission fireworks display, their application to do so on September 20th, 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item B on the agenda is ordinance 1522. I'll just let you read that. Tell us about that, Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll give a brief introduction and then stand for questions. And the applicant for the special event is also here tonight, and I'm sure would be happy to answer your questions as well. So this is the first event of its kind in recent years at least, and it is in recognition of a special holiday or anniversary date of operations of Hempel Hardware in downtown Tongonoxie. The event parameters are described in the agenda statement and the submitted special event permit materials. The reason it's coming before the city council tonight for your consideration is that in order to be able to serve and consume alcoholic beverages on a portion of public property and also in a temporary event forum, the city council is required to approve a temporary alcohol permit as well as a ordinance exempting the prohibition that normally stands on consumption or sales of alcohol in public places, which the street and street right-of-way do qualify as one of those public properties. As you can see in the event layout, there is an isolated area shown for the beer sales and that the event parameters would be the boundaries of the ability to consume alcohol at the event as part of the event. Our police department has worked closely with the applicant to examine the plan, talk about traffic routing options, and we believe that the proposed plan that allows Pleasant to continue unhindered but block off a portion of Fifth Street from Pleasant to near the rear driveway of the depot building would present very few impacts to public safety, to transit in the area during the event hours, and event participants would be able to be safe in that environment. So it does have our staff support for the proposed layout, and we don't have any concerns to highlight on the alcoholic beverages vendor or the temporary alcohol permit application. But again, happy to answer any questions the council may have for staff or would definitely like to invite the applicant to speak if you'd like to hear from her.
Would you care to speak to the council?
I don't know. Excuse me. I don't know if I can add anything. That was a pretty great description of the event. But yeah, we're celebrating 50 years. April was 50 years of Hempel Hardware, and it'll be two years in January of Joe and myself owning the business. So it's a pretty big milestone for us. But we plan to keep it on Hempel property except for that Fifth Street area on the diagram. Yeah, any questions?
Any questions, council?
What are lumber games?
So we're still drawing up the map to see what all will fit, but we do have, you know, cornhole. There's going to be tons of yard games. If you can think of a yard game, we're going to build it. We're going to make it happen. There's going to be kind of a courtyard area for the games to happen. And we're still kicking around a timed bracketed nail drive competition. So that might be the main event. We'll have to have signups and insurance waivers and all that kind of stuff. Yeah.
It all sounds wonderful, and congratulations on taking on a successful business in town. I know you see me there regularly.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks for doing this, too. It's great having more events and more opportunities. Good job.
Very much so. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve on?
Yes, I'd make a motion. We approve ordinance number 1522, allowing the consumption of alcohol on certain public property for a limited time and purpose pursuant to KSA 41719D11E. Don't forget the E. For the Hempel Hardware Celebration and Lumber Games public event.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Good luck. Hope it goes great.
Item C on our agenda is ordinance 1523, approval of allowing the consumption of alcohol on certain public property for a limited time and purpose for the Tongonoxie Days 2024 special event, public event. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is, again, related to the Tongonoxie Days event that we talked about during the fireworks display approval earlier tonight. Well, you see it, again, as in very similar format and fashion to the ordinance you just approved for the Hempel Hardware event, except this is for the Tongonoxie Days celebration scheduled on Saturday, the 21st of September. Again, the exemption being requested is the consumption of alcohol on public property, and there's a little more public property involved in this case. As you can see in the event map in the packet, the area of the event stretches from Third and Delaware down the hill along Third Street to the intersection of Main and Delaware, or I'm sorry, Main and Third, and generally includes the area of Gallagher Park, the pool, Southern Parking Lot, and then Main Street between Third and Fourth. So it's sort of a T kind of a layout design. You can see also illustrated in the temporary alcohol permit application that Alberto Yaloc, who's a mainstay at this festival, is proposed to be the alcohol vendor again. He had a change in his licensing that spurred the need to do a temporary permit. He used to maintain an annual license to the state, which eliminated the need for the council to make this approval, but that has changed, and so we're following proper protocol with the State Department of Revenue Division of Alcohol Beverage Control. So we're working closely with their team and the event planning group for Tongi Days to make sure that the proper permits are achieved and the proper process is followed. There'll be the one alcohol vendor, and again, it's a person with experience in this event, so we don't have any concerns in that regard. For the ordinance approval, as you can see, that's all in the packet, but if you have questions for staff, we'd be happy to assist with that as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Porter. Are there any questions for Mr. Porter? If not, I would accept a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance number 1523, allowing the consumption of alcohol on certain public property for a limited time and purpose pursuant to KSA 41719D11E, Tongonoxie Days 2024 public event.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. You're free to go. You don't need to hang around unless you want to. Okay. Item D?
People encourage you to run for this.
Item D is consider approval of purchase of mobile generator equipment to support sanitary sewer operations. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a discussion topic that generated actually earlier this year in the development of the 2025 budget. Mr. Heskett, who's here tonight and would be happy to address you, I know, brought this forward as a budget request among other requests for 2025. And during discussion with the city council, it was identified that the ordering timeframe is still between 25 and 30 weeks for delivery, so a pretty substantial look ahead to achieving the purchase even once the order is placed. And based on fund balance availability in the city's sewer operations and sewer capital fund, there was the opportunity to move ahead quicker, and so this is being brought back forward tonight with some procurement information for your consideration. When we look at the history of this item, the mobile generators service lift stations throughout the city, we have, I believe it's eight now, seven of which require a mobile generator to provide electrical power in the case of power outage. Those lift stations operate to move waste against gravity to where it needs to go to then resume gravity flow to our sewer plant. These operations are critical. They happen at the worst time and circumstances, and we need to be prepared with equipment on hand, ready to service these adequately and quickly. Time is of the essence in some cases. When we look at this equipment, we did look at three vendors for quotes that you can see identified in the council packet. One of those vendors does have the same equipment. It's a different vendor, but it's the same equipment that we purchased back in 2021 when we last purchased a mobile generator for service. Staff do support moving ahead with that quote despite it being a little more than $5,000 more in cost than the second, and then the lowest quote, again, because of that exact similarity to the equipment we have on hand. Mr. Heskett described in his justification that it's dark, when it's raining, when you're out in the elements, you don't want to have to remember, now, how do I work this equipment versus that? We also have electrical connections that we spent over $21,000 at the time to upgrade all the lift stations to interact properly with the generator we have. And so to be able to seamlessly connect this second piece of equipment in the case that it was being used is definitely an impetus that they felt strongly about as a priority. The good news on the procurement side is although it's not the low bid, it is a bid through Sourcewell, which is a regional government pricing solution. So we are able to understand that this has been bid in a larger sense, and so it isn't necessary for us to go to other, you know, nationwide suppliers of these generators and look for quotes to compare on this brand. This is a competitively priced quote, so we're able to move ahead with that, and we do that commonly on other purchases. Happy to take any questions you have, or of course, Mr. Heskett would too, but let us know if you have any other topics to discuss.
Did you have anything to add, Mr. Heskett? All right, thank you. Counsel, any questions?
It seems that, you know, we're going to be using emergency generators during an emergency, and it makes perfect sense that we would have identical generators. And so your team would not have to worry about, is this going to interface with this part? That we should go ahead and get an identical one to the one that we have.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid from 3E Electrical Engineering and Equipment for the purchase of the Kohler Generator and Trailer for a total cost not to exceed $85,561 US.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dale. Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That's it for new business. What's on the city? We have on the city manager agenda the 2024 of July financial report. Mr. Porter?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
This month through July, we have our standard format monthly budget report, but we did pull in a lot more detailed analysis of sales tax results. And so I want to direct your attention in the packet online, and we'll also pull it up on the screen. The other PDF. Yeah, there should be two. Oh, is it not there? Okay. It's in the agenda folder if we just navigate to that. That's all right. And we'll go to page six to start with. We may try to zoom in if we can on the normal view, just on the top half and bottom half. Thank you. So on page six of the report, page six through nine represents some summary analysis of the findings. What we did is we reviewed what the state of Kansas provides for detailed monthly remittance advice. So they show for every vendor who registers with the State Department of Revenue the amount of sales tax, and in a separate report, the amount of use tax, compensating use tax, for the city sales and use. This doesn't cover our share of the overall county sales and use. This is just for the city limits of Tongonoxie and our tax jurisdiction. So when we look at that data, the spreadsheet is enormous because it captures from 2022 through 2024, year-to-date. That's over 69,000 rows of data, so it's a huge amount of information to consolidate and summarize. But we are building upon that as we go, so it gives us more and more insights. Again, the state of Kansas gives us this data, so they're the creators of it and stand by the accuracy of it. We also, though, are not allowed to release personally identifiable information for any one business. So thus, you won't see any results that show you for Dollar General Market, here's the outcome. For Brothers Grocery, here's the outcome. We can't do that. And if we did that, we would risk losing access and potentially all cities losing access to that information. We analyze the results according to the NAICS code, which you may have heard of before. That's the North American Industry Classification System, and we organized it in two fashions, by sector, which are two-digit summaries, so high-level groupings, which you can see illustrated on this chart on page six, and then by national industry, which is the most detailed drill-down look, which looks at things like vendors who provide this type of equipment and that type of equipment and another type of equipment. So it's sort of the highest level and the lowest level of detail. So page six shows two charts. The top chart shows January through July remittances for 2022, 2023, and 2024 in the grouped vertical bars. So you can see in red the most current year seven-month return. You can see it compared to the two prior years. What I want to direct our attention to is not any one piece of information, but just to summarize some trends. Retail trade is the largest sales tax collector sector by a large margin. About two-thirds of the overall remittance is in that one sector. Utilities is number two in sales tax, so that's sales tax generally that is paid on electrical service production and natural gas sales. So a portion of each customer's bill includes franchise fees, of which the city receives the full amount. You also pay sales tax on a share of those, whether you're a business or a resident, and that amount does come back to the city and the state in their proportions. Six out of the 12 sectors in that top chart have a decrease from last year, which was a record high in most, if not all, years, but it is still, in those six out of 12, an increase from two years ago, which was a very strong year. So sort of that slight dip, but still higher than two years ago, is a trend we saw in half of those 12 sectors. Four out of the 12 sectors show an increase from both of the last two years. So those are some smaller sectors, if you look at that, but we did see a few areas where we did see slight jumps from prior years. One thing that I want to caveat sort of all this information by is that the vendor and the state work out this NAICS code. And so one year, a certain code for convenience stores didn't exist. It was sort of all grouped under some other description. They added a new code, or they start reporting under a new code. We didn't add a convenience store to the community, but they reported differently. And so we can see some irregularities like that. So a very finite difference year-to-year really has to be studied carefully to understand, is that a true trend, or is it just an aberration or a statistical correction someone made? So we can't really, you know, divulge too much insight from this, but it is informative to look at. Moving down to the bottom of this page, that's compensating use tax by sector. It shows the same information as the top, just again, compensating use. So it's bought elsewhere, delivered to the community here within our tax district. When we look at that, retail trade is also the leading sector by a similar margin relative to the other sectors. Vehicles are the next highest, which makes sense. If you buy a vehicle elsewhere and come back and register it in Leavenworth County where you reside, you pay sales and use tax. If you paid it at the dealer, you pay the higher amount if Leavenworth County's sales tax in your home district is higher than where you bought it. So vehicles are obviously a much higher use tax in our case because we don't have vehicle dealerships located in the city of Tongonoxie. We have sometimes a very small amount remitted, but there isn't direct sales tax because there are no dealerships that service our local residents here. Talking about the net difference year-to-year from last year to this year by sector, that's not illustrated on this graph, but I wanted to highlight just a couple things. Real estate rental and leasing is one sector that went down 62% since last year. The biggest reason for that is about $25,000 in difference in a very small industry detail called construction equipment leasing and licensing. So that amount was almost the entirety of that $25,000 dip from the prior year. That's the kind of insight that you might be able to guess, you know, was there a particular vendor, say, servicing our developments out at the business park last year in the early part of the year, who this year is no longer there? Big construction sites could be a big contributor to an item like that. It also could be that, you know, some other market item changed. But when you see a difference that dramatic, I mean, over 50% decrease, that's pretty substantial and a pretty substantial amount, too, dipping by $25,000. Accommodation and food services are up 23% compared to last year for that sector. Full-service restaurants are the biggest jump we could see in the detailed view. We do have available those detailed views in a spreadsheet, so if you wanted to see that information, we could share that with you as well. There's a lot of rows of information, but that is sort of the lowest level of detail we could share with you if you wanted to see that and review it. Other services is another area that went up by about 26% a sector. Auto repairs were the highest spike in that. I don't know the driver behind that unless there was increased business activity. It also could be that auto repair services classified as another NAICS code and then switched, say, when a business transitioned in ownership or if they got new, you know, accounting assistance and remitted to the state in a different fashion. There's really no identifiable rhyme or reason to that from what we could see. But that was an increase of about $13,000 compared to the prior year. So we see different sectors moving in different directions, but you can see there is a consistent trend, at least on the sales tax side, that we were higher than two years ago but lower than last year in several sectors. Any questions about this high-level view before we look at the?
Just to be clear, the sales tax column includes the use tax. Is that correct?
No.
They're both separate?
It's split out.
Okay, so.
The top bar chart is sales alone.
So they're completely separate from each?
They're completely separated in this view, by sector and by type. Yep. Unfortunately, the sectors are so broad, like when you say other services, you can't really discern a lot what exactly that entails.
Well, it's interesting, I think, to me that the use tax on vehicles, for example, is... It looks to me like it's a little bit lower than the sales tax.
Well...
So for example, like 2024, it's just under $50,000 on the use tax, and it looks like it's real close to $50,000 on the sales tax.
It's a little hard to see on the Y-axis on the sales tax, but that first line is actually $50,000, so it's actually less than $10,000. The vehicle category, these aren't organized the same way. They're in descending order. So vehicle is the fourth from the...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
They're not. I'm sorry, they're not...
Gotcha. You're right, right.
They're shown that way to illustrate in order of magnitude, sector by sector.
The construction process, we talked about that a couple meetings ago. The, obviously, the hills, the number, the total dollar cost for hills relative to the construction industry in Tongonoxie. You would think that would have made a significantly bigger impact.
The biggest reason that we probably saw very little to almost no impact was those projects with tax abatement are qualified for a PEC or a project exemption certificate. So all tangible goods and purchases eligible for normal sales tax are exempt under that state program.
That was part of the package. Okay.
Yeah. Otherwise, you're correct. It would be just astronomical. And I think what we saw in that spike last year was some vendors probably didn't do the paperwork or didn't know they had a PEC. And so if I had to guess, that's what I would assume happened, is that some vendors did pay sales tax to the state incorrectly, so if they did. But when you think about the number of vendors and their awareness of the project and its exemption, there could have easily been some.
State-level exemption, not a city-level, is that correct?
Correct. They would qualify through the use of an IRB or EDX, but the State Department of Revenue can just simply issue it to a qualified project as well. I think just a quick note on that, though, even though they received a project exemption certificate from revenue, when you have a large-scale project like that that mobilizes a lot of equipment, that equipment, I believe, pays a personal property tax for where that equipment is located for the majority of the year. So it didn't quite make up for a full loss of the sales tax potential there, but there were additional revenues that were collected through that construction process.
What was disappointing, too, is equipment new enough doesn't pay that personal property tax. And like in the school bond project, that construction contractor had a lot of old equipment because we saw a big spike that year. And with the vendors used for the Hills project, they must have had very advanced equipment because there was not much of a spike, and they were there just as long, if not longer. So interesting to see. So I'm going to move to next to the page seven, eight, and nine, but we'll stay on page seven and maybe zoom in to a few elements to kind of show. So what this three-page span illustrates is a summary of several key attributes for each fiscal year. So page seven is the 2024 year-to-date, January through July. Page eight is all of 2023, and page nine is all of 2022. And I want to just highlight a few key... And I want to just highlight a few key points in general as observations, and if they spur any discussion, that's just fine. Pie graphs, so pie graphs in the center of each page, the only pie chart on here shows, uniquely, I thought, for all three fiscal years, about 32% of our collections are compensating use tax in the city, and about 68% are direct sales. That was a little bit wider of a difference than I thought we would see, but it was fascinating that the numbers actually worked out every year in that exact same ratio. So over those three years, we haven't seen a twist in that ratio of the type of receipt we receive from the state for this community. That's just kind of interesting to me, that over that much time, we didn't see differences. Looking then also on the top right, you can see a breakout in a small table there for individual subsets, which again, we can't identify by name who those vendors are, but we ranked them in terms of total remittances of sales and use tax combined. So the top three in 2024 have paid a little over 206,000 in sales and use tax to the city, and that's 22% of our overall collections year-to-date. Top five have paid a little less than 270,000, that's almost 30% of our collections. Top 10, top 20, top 100 represent about 78% of our collections. The thing I want to point out, too, is we're at currently over 4,400 businesses remitting, so the top 100 of that larger amount pay almost 80% of our receipts. So we do have a few key vendors that make up really almost 20-plus percent, as you can see illustrated, and the top 100 make up almost 80%. So in some ways, that's good to have that stratification, but in some ways, to rely on three vendors for almost a quarter of our receipts is definitely also a risk if some of those vendors were to change their business model, become exempted from remitting sales tax for any one reason. So those are all things we have to think about. I don't know what's going on with the microphone. That's weird. That same chart is again in each of the next two pages, so you'll be able to see that comparison, if you'd like to compare page by page. On the far left-hand side of the screen, in blue at the top, is sales tax remittance by state, so you can see the total amount of sales tax from each state of registration for a business. Kansas leads the way, unsurprisingly, in sales tax. Local businesses often have a local presence or a local address when they report to the state, so about 82% of sales tax this year has come from Kansas businesses. But you do see a smattering of other businesses in almost 100 international cities where businesses have registered their address. Use tax is in orange on the bottom left, and that shows the state of Washington as the number one, with Kansas behind.
You know, good old Amazon.
Yeah, that's a great guess, Ms. Stevens. And there are other corporations, too, but that is definitely one major corporation. So that's not surprising to see, but it is interesting, states kind of come and go. If you look year to year, some drop off, some change positions and rank, so we do see some slight differences there. Missouri is not quite as big of a number as I kind of assume, being the closest state to us and the other part of the metro, but that's just kind of interesting to see that happen. Then monthly trends are shown in the bar chart, kind of in the center of the page, but the bottom right-hand corner, the large chart there, I want to call your attention to that as well. That is the detailed dive-in view of the industry codes, and that's the top 20 in total collections, so that's sales and use, and you can see it broken out into sales and then use and then total, and it's sorted by total. So electronic shopping and mail order is number one in each of the three years, pretty substantially so. What's also kind of interesting is you'll see in some of those codes, like for instance, limited-service restaurants, full-service restaurants, and gas stations with convenience stores. You can kind of conceptualize all those together, despite the fact that this report breaks them out separately. When you combine the gas station with convenience store and the two restaurants, you get to roughly the total remittances as a whole for that other group, those three groups, as you do with online mail order shopping. So it isn't that, there isn't an equal amount of revenue coming in from online sales as well as the in-person, like, food industry in our local restaurants and stores, but I think you have to look at these categories in groupings to be able to see that impact measured against, let's say, like, online retailers. What I also find interesting, too, is when you look at this, supermarkets are consistently number two behind online sales, but not by a huge margin over number three. Vehicles are number three in each of the three years, and then normally, gas stations with C-stores or retail traders come in number four or number five, and those swap positions in total receipts each year. So we do have some pretty similar trends year to year from 2022 till this year in those detailed categories, as you can see. Are there any questions on, I know that's a lot of information, and it's very, very small font, which I apologize for.
Is the sales tax consistent across month to month? Maybe December's bigger because of holidays, or, but I mean, looking at this, if we take seven months out for '24, the online or the use tax would be quite a bit higher this year than last year and the previous year, so it's going up, that's because we use an online.
Yeah, we see that trend in 2024, definitely.
But unless there's an outlier month, so is it generally pretty consistent month to month?
We do, yeah, we have peaks and valleys. A lot of that, too, is some of these vendors remit quarterly, some remit monthly, and some remit semi-annually, and some play catch-up, like if they get behind, they pay double the next month. So when we look at the, like, we show the monthly collections by type for the current year and prior years, there's really no identifiable pattern, like we don't have a peak summer season where we're a vacation destination and sales go through the roof. What we really see is just sort of a meandering pattern.
Good, thank you.
I might just add one point there quickly, though. We have been more closely monitoring monthly remittances since about the fall of 2019, and we wanted to really track those trends during COVID, and so the linear trend line from 2019, like October of 19 to July of 2024, suggests, you know, that we've probably seen a $70,000 approximately combined annual adjustment on those, or I'm sorry, monthly adjustments, and I think, like Dan had mentioned earlier, the big spikes in that occurred kind of through the summer of '22, and so we're still trending a little bit higher, but it's, you're not seeing, the spikes aren't as large, and so, yeah, you have to start to extrapolate, is it, are we plateauing, did we kind of hit a new artificial, I guess plateau is the best way to describe it, but the interesting thing, and one of the reasons we started tracking it that way, was we were always kind of wondering if compensating use was being underreported, and then going through COVID where people ordered more things, forced everyone to kind of track that, I'll say everyone, the regulatory agencies that collect that and redistribute a little more closely, but I think what Mr. Porter is showing kind of for these more current trends, if you extrapolate it over time, I guess I'm just trying to say we are seeing some growth in that. But it is volatile. Sales tax is a tough one to tie yourselves to for 20 years and expect consistency.
Thank you, that's a lot of information to put together.
It's great data, thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Okay.
Good stuff, Dan.
Thanks, Dan. Item B under section six is draft 2025, proposed budget and CMIP update.
I, we'll ask Mr. Porter to go through some details, but we wanted to include this for a couple of reasons. One, to give you some updates, there were some projects that the city council had prioritized as we went through our CMIP development for the 2025 budget, and some of those involved initiatives to have other taxing entities as potential funding partners on that, so we can maybe give a quick update on that. The other one is just to explain again to everyone, or clarify, you know, when we have to go publish these budgets for R and R, we're going to, we have to account for projects that we think might start this year, but we're not sure if they're going to finish this year, so sometimes we have to account for those in both the current-year budget as well as the projected budget for next year, or if projects get started late and everything shifts to next year, so we just didn't want anyone to be concerned if they saw a bottom-line number for any sort of publication without some explanation of where that might have come from. So with that, Dan, if you want to maybe go through.
That's not our package, correct?
That's not our.
Okay.
So this is a copy of the summary and the notice of public hearing. It was published in the newspaper last Wednesday in the Tongonoxi Mirror. It's available on our city website. It shows for each of our budgeted funds, and at the top, the budgeted funds with the tax levy, the 2022 actuals, I'm sorry, the 2023 actuals, the 2024 projected estimate or budget, and then the proposed budget for next year on the far left-hand, or far-right upper corner. The really important piece that is shown in this is the date of the public hearing, the time of the public hearing, and the fact that the city is contemplating exceeding the revenue-neutral rate. Those are required elements of it. It isn't the city's choice of format, because it does have a few confusing aspects that we'll highlight, just for everyone's information, but again, this is required to be published, and it was last Wednesday, to be specific, in the newspaper and as of last week on the city website. What I want to highlight initially, just because it can show numbers that seem elevated, is in the third from the left column, Budget Authority for Expenditures for 2025. That amount, if you go to the bottom of the summary of notice, is $17,566,881. That amount is the legal limit the city would be allowed to expend in 2025 under the proposed budget as is. It has a couple of things that are duplicative or sort of enhancing to that number. The actual level of planned expenditures for 2025 is going to be in the range of 12.5 to $13 million. The reason for the difference, certain funds with a tax levy have to be budgeted to zero, meaning if you have a fund balance, you have to show in the state form as if you will spend it down to zero every year. So that alone, for the general fund, the debt service fund, and the two library funds, does add a significant amount of, close to $2 million in excess expenditures, I guess I would call it. The other thing that inflates this number significantly is projects like the Fourth Street Bridge project, for instance. We just awarded that contract this year. It's been budgeted for 2024. The vendor hasn't, the contractor has until March of 2025 to complete construction, and they'll bill, you know, at the conclusion of every month. So we are looking at some portion of that, hopefully not quite half, getting done next year, so we do need to budget some capacity in to the budget for the capital projects fund, for instance, next year for that project. So what I want to, I guess, point out in a summary fashion is, the total expenditure authorized level of over 17.5 million is nowhere close to an accurate number, it's just a part of this form. What is important to illustrate is the .065 mil difference from the current mil levy. That's a key part of this form, and it's also just the notice that, you know, invites the members of the public, if they have questions, to come to our budget hearing and revenue trait hearing to have those questions answered or at least addressed. But again, this is not our form or our preferred format for the form, because it does show this in an accurate number for total expenditures especially. Any questions on that element before we switch? Okay. The capital projects item, we do want to highlight that since the last budget work session, there have been productive discussions with other outside parties interested in funding a capital project in the area of East Street and Washington. So there are contemplated improvements to alignment, to the intersection turn lanes on both East and Washington Street. To move forward in that process, you know, we'll have more information for the council soon about avenues like an inter-local agreement that would firmly establish those funding partnerships and respective shares, but what I want to highlight is that the city would be the contract holder for that, so the city would incur the contractor, direct contract, the expenditure of all the funds, and either be reimbursed or drawed down from funding from other partners. So as we move forward in the budget process, we had to build some capacity in the capital projects fund and the special highway fund to help afford a transportation improvement like that. If that inter-local agreement didn't happen, if the project scope was downsized over time, we would see corresponding decreases in planned expenditures, but that also is a significant addition to this overall expense planning for next year. Any questions or other thoughts on?
Any questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Porter, appreciate it. Anything further on the city manager's agenda?
No other items.
Thank you, Mr. Brekovich. City attorney agenda?
No items, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem agenda?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
City council agenda, do you have anything, gentlemen? Okay, and I don't have anything for the mayor's agenda, so we will entertain a motion to adjourn, Mr. Dale.
Yes, since you asked, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Oh, I'll second.
We can't, she's not here.
I know.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. See you in a couple weeks, thank you.